First thing on the agenda is the approval of minutes of the July 13th, 2021 meeting.
Make a motion we approve the-
Mr. Betts is first.
One second.
I had a mind blank here all of a sudden. Okay, first and approved. All in favor? Any oppose? All passed. Thank you. Howdy. We open the public meeting of the Planning Board for the Community Health Connections definitive site plan review. In accordance with Article 10 of the City of Gardner zoning code, Chapter 675-1010, site plan review notice is hereby given that the Gardner Planning Board will conduct a public review meeting on Tuesday, August 10th, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the City Hall Auditorium, 95 Pleasant Street, Gardner, Mass. to consider the definitive site plan applications submitted by Community Health Connections, 326 Nichols Road, Pittsburgh, Massachusetts, 01420. The definitive plan depicts proposed construction of a 20,000-square-foot facility as well as a parking lot to be located on Tempani Boulevard. The application and site plan are available for viewing on the City of Gardner Planning Board website. The plans are also available for viewing in the Department of Community Development and Planning in Room 201, City Hall Annex. All persons interested in this matter who or who desire to offer testimony are invited to participate. This notice is also published on the Massachusetts newspaper publisher's website at http.maspublicnotices.org. The representative representing the CAC?
Timothy Hunt with Martin Brothers Land Management, Chris Keenan with Quinn Engineering will be presenting. We would like to thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the committee for allowing us to present tonight. Chris has done a good job, and Quinn Engineering and ourselves have been working. We would like to thank you guys for all your help and time that we've been able to spend with you and our variance and everything that we've been able to do thus far. I'd like to thank Jeff Andrews. He's the director of all the facilities for Community Health Connection to be here tonight. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Chris Keenan with Quinn Engineering.
Good evening. Chris Keenan from Quinn Engineering. Community Health Connections is proposing to construct a 20,000-square-foot building which will house medical and dental facilities on Tempani Boulevard and Gardner. The location of the site falls in between Mill Street and the Walmart secondary access road along Tempani Boulevard. If you continue south along Tempani Boulevard, you hit the light at Walmart down here. In addition to the 20,000-square-foot building, as the chairman said, we're proposing a parking lot in front with 101 parking spaces. We've provided landscaping around the parking area, inside the parking area, in accordance with the city ordinance. All stormwater will be collected from parking area and run to a stormwater basin out behind the building. We're proposing multiple access points. We're proposing a new driveway out to Route 68. This would be our primary access point. And then we have two secondary access points to the existing secondary Walmart access road, and we have access to that via permanent access and utility easement. Utilities also to the building will be via the Walmart secondary access road. That's really the gist of it in a nutshell. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Do you have the site plan?
I do have the site plan.
And can you tilt that plan a little more towards the board itself?
More towards the board? You got it. This is the site plan sheet with the proposed 20,000-square-foot building, parking lot in front, access from Tempani Boulevard and to the Walmart secondary access road with our stormwater basin behind.
Yes?
Question, the parking lot, rear building.
Right-hand side. It's delivery closest to the building. What's the indent, if you would, that's way out?
We allow for tractor-trailer traffic to come in and back up to a loading area. And then the circle is the minimum turning radius to get that tractor-trailer truck back out in that direction.
So there's no parking allowed?
There's no parking in back. All the parking is out in front of the building. And that's in accordance with the variance that was issued for the project.
Steve, they made an application to the... Because the parking lot was in the middle, they applied to the Board of Appeals, zoning Board of Appeals. And I went to... I sat in on that hearing, and the zoning Board of Appeals approved the movement of the parking lot to the front of the building. I believe that's true.
That's correct.
I have a question about lighting for the parking lot. We received information about the wall packs. And I do recall at the... One of the initial meetings, there was concern also for the type of lighting within the parking lot itself.
Sure. We did propose a photometric plan that was submitted with your package. It did identify the light poles and fixtures that were to be installed in the front parking area. Primarily, they fall within the landscape aisles or in-between parking spaces in the two center aisles. The photometric show that we are designed so that light does not spill over at the property lines.
Okay. So those are going to be radiating down without expanding out to the sides?
That's correct. They are dark skies elements, so there's no upward-facing lighting.
Okay. Now, on the retention point in the rear, remember, vaguely remember the discussion. That's something that you're going to construct as opposed to a piece of territory that's already there with a detention in the surface.
That's correct. We're constructing it completely from scratch as part of the construction with the building. The stormwater portion of the construction will go on first, so we'll put in all the stormwater basins, the temporary basins. That way, we protect the wetland and the riverfront area that's down at the bottom of the hill and back.
How big is that retention point, roughly?
It holds approximately, I want to say, 30,000 cubic feet of water. So it's the length of the building, 200 feet long, and it's maybe 50 feet wide at the top part, and then it narrows down to about 10 feet wide at the end.
Good.
We are before conservation. I don't think it's next week. It might be the week after. And conservation will review the location of the drainage structure and basin as well.
Okay. Board, do you have any other questions? Chris, anything?
Yeah, a few things to go over, if you don't mind.
Sure. Please do.
To add on to the site lighting, concerns... When we look at the photometric plan, I knew trying to keep light on the site the best you can. But near the entrances where you'd come off of Tempani and then also off of the Walmart access path, the lighting looks either a little too dim or none at all, especially on the Walmart side. So maybe worth a consideration, just pushing some of those lights out a little closer to the property lines.
Sure.
Even if some of the area bleeds over a little bit, I think that area, that neighborhood, I don't think you're going to be disturbing anyone.
I don't know if the photometric plan takes into account the existing lights on the Walmart access road. We have a light pole and a light pole right opposite both entrances.
Oh, okay.
So I think it's probably covered. It just wasn't in the new lighting.
Yeah, and I'm just looking at these zeros and .1s.
Happy to have the lighting consultant update that if it's appropriate.
Sure. We'll see it tonight on the drive home. For utilities, the DPW requires separation of the fire and domestic water service. You have a single eight-inch coming in.
Sure.
Maybe to save a little bit instead of doing two separate... If you add a hydrant towards the end, maybe somewhere off the-
Sure.
-the truck turnaround, then you could just bring in the single line.
Single line to the hydrant.
But with no hydrant, we'd prefer you to have-
Gotcha.
-a separate domestic and a separate fire.
Not a problem.
And then for the sewer, is that a force main or is that gravity?
Gravity.
Okay. Then could you tie it into a service stub instead of the manhole?
Sure.
And finally, do you want to talk a little bit about traffic turning into the site from Tempani?
Sure.
Okay. So we have had these discussions, and we are more than willing to put traffic, strip lanes and stuff. I think it's a matter of, obviously, we didn't want to change the plans at the last minute. He needs to go back and do some dimensioning to figure out what we need to do. But that is absolutely something that Chris will address.
Sure. We did submit a traffic report from AK Consultants. So I didn't do the traffic report, so bear with me a little bit. The traffic report evaluated turning maneuvers into the Walmart access road and into our new driveway, along with out of our new driveway in both directions and out of the Walmart access road in both directions. I believe they found adequate levels of service for both of those intersections.
Yep.
They did not make any recommendations for traffic improvements in Tempani Boulevard, but I know through the planning director that he's looking for some striping changes out in the street, a right-turn lane out, along with a right-turn lane in on Tempani Boulevard, which we're happy to accommodate.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea as well.
The second half access road, where is a lane turn in as well?
Yeah, and it shows up on our plan. We do have the right lane that turns in, along with the through-traffic lane that passes by the intersection. The roadway is currently wide enough to accommodate the right-turn-in and right-turn-out lanes as requested by the planning director. So we're happy to do that without needing to do any pavement changes in Tempani Boulevard.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. So right-turn-in, right-turn-out. Left-turn-in. So right-turn-in, left-turn-in.
You want a left-turn-in as well?
Left-turn-in going, yeah.
Going north.
Yeah.
Yes.
And right-turn-out, I don't know if that's necessary.
Yeah, out of the site, I don't think that matters.
We don't need the right-turn-out. Right-turn-in, left-turn-out.
My concerns are within Tempani Boulevard, which would be southbound, a right-turn-in, and northbound, a left-turn-in.
Because traffic on that road does not necessarily, you know, meet the posted speed limit the majority of the time.
Sure.
So it is a little hazardous having people stop in the middle of roadway to take turns while, you know, having oncoming traffic.
Sure. And again, I think the roadway is wide enough to permit it, so it's simply just a line-striping operation.
Yeah.
Perfect. That's all for me. Thank you.
You're all set?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple.
Okay.
Back to the lighting. What's the height of the poles?
I believe the height of the poles was listed at 28 feet, but I don't have that plan in front of me.
Zoning is 20 feet.
20 feet?
Yeah.
Happy to make that change if we're over the 20 feet.
So I think we probably require a new lighting plan.
Sure.
Anyway, so if you want to look at the existing lighting on the site, on the roadway?
I'll update the lighting plan to include what's existing, and then I'll address the height of the poles as well.
Great. Thanks. The drainage from the rooftop, is that being... Is it going to the interior side system?
It goes to the stormwater basin. Interior drains to the stormwater basin.
And again, the last thing I have is the snow storage.
Okay.
Tim and I had spoken about it.
Yes.
You have a lot of landscaped areas there, which is nice, but I would recommend you don't have snow storage in each one of the landscaped areas. So if you can try to...
Are we talking along the edge here?
Yeah, those are all landscaped areas.
They are landscaped there. We had proposed the landscaping outside of a snow storage area. We had proposed a snow storage shelf between the landscaping and the pavement. But if that's inappropriate, I believe we've got plenty of area to store snow on-site. So if you'd like to keep it away from landscaped areas, that's not a problem.
Yeah. So under the ordinance, you can't use landscaped areas as snow storage. If you're using that landscaped area as your open space requirement, and I understand you have a lot more open space on the site than you need.
Mm-hmm.
But at the same time, we all know what happens to landscaping when snow, sand, and salt mix in with it.
Sure.
So if you could try to consolidate.
Sure. Happy to eliminate anything along the edge here. We don't have any snow storage proposed within the landscaped island, so I think this is the only area where we've got landscaping up against our snow storage.
Ultimately, unfortunately, that's basically what happens when you hire contractors to come and do the work, but you can try to educate them and try to, you know...
We're happy to put a sign up, designate a snow storage area if that's helpful.
I would just try to consolidate as much as you can on the plan. As little areas as possible.
Any... Again, anything tickle your mind or additional questions?
I am all set. Just one.
Sure.
Retention basin on the back, is there anything that's set up as far as long-term maintaining of the retention basin?
Yeah, we did submit a hydrology and stormwater management plan package, which has an operation and maintenance plan for all of the drainage system on-site, when to clean the catch basins, when to clean the stormwater basin, when to mow it, that sort of thing. So everything is outlined for yearly maintenance requirements in the operation and maintenance plan. And I do believe, once we go to conservation, that that operation and maintenance plan will be recorded with the deed for ongoing maintenance requirements.
Is the retention plan going to be fenced off?
Yes, it will.
It will?
Yep.
Just to prevent anyone from wanting to take a swim at the approach?
Hopefully, it doesn't contain water. Too often, it's designed as an infiltration basin to soak back into the ground.
True.
But for safety, we do have it fenced and gated.
Thank you. Anything else? Do you have anything?
All set.
All set. Chairman is all set? Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Is anyone from the public that would want to comment about this project? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say that my office has spoken with Community Health Connections about this project. I do believe it's good for the city, and I think that the recommendations made today are helpful to the site. But I just wanted to say, overall, in the project, I think it's going to be something that'll help benefit the city in the long run with the services that are going to be offered there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have your letters that you had submitted to us, and they are on file. Is there anyone else that would want to speak in favor of this project? Is there anyone present that wants to speak in favor of this project? Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor of this project? Is there anyone present that wants to speak against the project? Anyone present that wants to speak against the project? Anyone present that wants to speak against the project? If not, I declare that this public meeting be closed. Thank you again. Looking at something I did.
We'll have all updated plans in seven days.
Very good. Thank you. Now we're in the whole business. Now let's get rid of the easy one first. The applicant's agent, and I'm talking in reference to the Hayward Hospital expansion project, the agent.
Let's go back to this one right here. Now we're going to take that into consideration.
Yeah, you're right. Excuse me.
Unfortunately, just left, but I think we hear all the answers.
We've got item two. Discuss the definitive site plan, Community Health Connections. Need a motion to...
For site plan approval.
For the site plan approval?
Make a motion we approve the site plan approval for these community health connections.
An approved motion and second?
Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion, further discussion? Mr. Chairman?
I'm going to recommend that the planning board approve with a few different conditions.
Yes.
To provide a plan showing north-south turning lanes off of Tempani Boulevard, Route 68, into the site, as we just discussed, to be approved by the city engineer. Revise the site plan to consolidate, reduce snow storage areas, to minimize storage in landscaped areas. Plan to be approved by the director and city engineer. Provide a new lighting plan, showing pole heights in the notes, and encompassing off-site street lighting. And also receive conservation approval, conservation commission approval for the site plan. I know the city engineer had a couple other items that he addressed. Chris, do you think that...
Yeah.
The utility connections, those can be handled through the utility permit, so I don't believe those need to be part of the condition.
Okay.
But the operation and maintenance plan provided as part of the stormwater approval, that annual report should be submitted to my office. Take that as a consideration.
That's an annual report?
Yes. And that just shows that they're taking care of the system that we've approved here.
So the operations maintenance plan annual report be submitted to the city engineer 30 days after completion.
Yes, thank you.
And that's it. Five.
Chris, did you want to add something about the water supply coming in, two separate water supplies?
They have to file a utility permit through DPW anyway to get the approval, so instead of writing down the little minor things like that, we can handle it at that point.
That's a matter of operations, city operations.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Okay. So the motion is amended?
Has amended.
Second, okay, Bill?
Still second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? No, no. All passed unanimously. All that's done. How about that?
One down.
Now we'll go back to the Hayward Hospital project. Again, the hospital's agent had requested that as far as the expansion project is going on, is asked for a continuance of our open meeting, or a public meeting until next month's meeting. If there's no objections...
No objections.
Then I will continue.
Mr. Jim, if I may.
Sure.
If you could, if the board could vote to continue the site plan approval meeting till the next, or actually...
Site plan approval.
Yeah, decision to the next meeting. The planning board has 90 days after submission of the plan to make a decision. After this meeting will be, and prior to the next meeting will reach that 90-day period. So the applicant has requested a continuance until the next meeting for the site plan approval.
So you need a motion from us, from the board itself?
Yes.
Make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
To extend the thing.
Site plan approval.
Site plan approval, okay. Made and seconded?
Second, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Open this one for the expansion and then take the vote to continue it to the next meeting. So open the public hearing.
For the expansion?
Yeah.
I'll open the meeting for the special permit Hayward Hospital expansion project, and we'll continue with the meeting, the public meeting, until, I believe, September 14th, which is our next scheduled meeting.
Take a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll say second.
Make a motion, second.
Make a motion, we expanded.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? No discussion? Call a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, so that's continued.
Close. Close the hearing.
What about the micro grid?
Yeah, just close, yeah, close the expansion first. I'm looking, I want to...
Okay. I'll... We don't want to close the meeting. We want to just...
Continue it, yeah.
Continue.
Which we just did, sorry.
I want to continue the Hayward Hospital expansion project public meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now we can go into the micro grid.
Okay, now we're going to address the Hayward Hospital micro grid project. We're a discussion or a vote of approval.
So we do have members, I think, from Ty &amp; Bond Siemens here to...
And why don't we have a presentation from Ty &amp; Bond one more time, in case something crops up that we didn't pick up on?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, come on up. I'll just give a brief synopsis. We, as the planning board knows, we hired Fussell O'Neil to do a peer review of the project.
Yep.
We've had a number of correspondences back and forth on the peer review, which are in your packet. And we've pretty much met all the matters that were brought out in the peer review, except for two, which were addressed today. We just haven't had time to review them prior to tonight's meeting. So if the board does move forward with closing the hearing tonight and making, taking a, making a decision on the special permit application, that would be conditioned into the actual decision.
The last two.
Yeah. So, Matt, you want to...
Sure.
Or you can keep it there or pull it over, either way. I don't know what the camera, make sure the camera guy can get it. I think so. Can you get that?
Yeah, so I'm Matt Zork with Ty &amp; Bond. We have Dr. Confar here with Siemens. As Trevor said, we submitted this originally back in April, and we had a virtual hearing on May 11th. In that time period, we had two rounds of peer review comments, so this updated plan set addresses those comments. In lieu of presenting the whole project again, I'll just highlight those changes for everyone. Hopefully this works. On the note sheet, we added a couple notes here. There was a concern about tying into some of the existing drainage structures on-site, so we added a note here to verify the condition prior to construction or visually inspect them. So that's a condition on the notes here. Another note here is regard to oil containment. So there's two transformers that are located in the previous rear parking lot area. There's going to be a geomembrane liner that's going to be installed around these two transformers to appease that concern, oil containment. This sheet just generally shows, there's this temporary stockpile area, so the very northern portion of the site, north of the solar canopies, that's where we identified an area for temporary stockpiling. And you'll see on the previous sheet, we have a new note that shows the containment around the stockpile with erosion controls. around the stockpile with erosion controls. So this sheet has a, there's a concern or a comment on construction sequence, so this section here outlines the, the general construction sequence of the project. There's, there's going to be two phases, there's the infrastructure piece of this, and there's the micro grid piece of this. So, in, in general, the, the plan is to kind of initiate the phase one section of this, this summer, and into, into next, in the summer of 2022, and the micro grid portion would be right now potentially for the spring of next year to the summer of next year as well. Minor, minor notes on here, we added an invert table, or a structure table that shows all the invert elevations of all existing structures. We had to remove and reset some guardrail here for some drainage revisions, which we'll show on the next page. And the basin was modified a little bit in terms of what we're removing for existing structures, there's three structures that will be removed, and we're going to retain one in the center, but we'll have a new outlet control structure in, in the basin, which I'll show you on the drainage sheet. All right, so this is our proposed site layout. So, in our previous design, we had a sediment for bay with infiltration basin behind it. We have changed that to a, a deep sump catch basin with a, a treatment unit, and so this train has been revised to get the TSS removal that we need prior to the infiltration basin. Believe that's it on this sheet. This is the grading plan, this is kind of just outlining the changes for the, the new structures that we changed here for the treatment plan, or treatment train, new outlet control structure, and this, this is the basin, generally the same, it's just omitted an infiltration for bay at the beginning. Don't believe anything has changed on the utility side. Nothing has changed on retaining walls. Just getting to the new drainage structures. So this is a new detail sheet, this is just the temporary stockpile erosion control detail. This is our new stormwater bioclean silicone, or cyclone separator, deep sump catch basin, and just general standard frame grates. And I believe that was it for revisions to the planes.
That's all structural stuff that didn't change.
So I don't know if there's any further questions?
No questions.
No question? Chris?
No.
Matt, can you talk a little bit about the containment, containment systems on the site for the transformers, and maybe talk a little bit about the actual propane tank and the reasoning behind all that, the design for that?
Yep. So, the, the propane tank, we're not, we're not having, or proposing any containment on the propane tank, it's non-refrigerated, so if there is a release, it goes to the atmosphere, it doesn't pool on the ground. So that was our reasoning, and there's NFPA references in, in the site plan application that, that have, that references the NFPA, and also why di containment is not necessary for non-refrigerated propane. The, the transformer oil containment, again, not necessarily required, we were proposing a spill prevention control and countermeasures plan, it's basically monthly inspections of, of the units to make sure that they're not leaking and stuff like that, which they'll still do, but we did include a, a geomembrane that's basically, is laid out under, under the ground, and it kind of is like a pan that goes around the, the transformer, and it's backfilled with stones, you don't actually see it, but what it does, it allows water to go through, but if there's any hydrocarbons or anything that goes, or oil that gets out, it's a release, the geomembrane actually turns solid, and it doesn't release anything past that point, so it contains, it's kind of like a fabric almost, but it contains the hydrocarbons.
Thanks.
Very good. I hate to say it, but I do remember all of those discussions.
Only a couple months ago.
Yeah. Anything else?
I know, Mr. Jim.
Okay.
I make a motion, we accept the Hayward Hospital micro grid project infinity plan as seconded.
Motion seconded? Go ahead.
Just some comments, I'm not sure if you want to go through, so I, I, I didn't hear it all, but the, the motion was to-
To accept the micro-
Approve the special permit for-
The micro-
The micro grid project?
That's great.
Yeah, good. You've all been given a, a draft of the special permit decision, and I think I, I also shared it with the applicant. Matt, have you had a chance to review it, has your team had a chance to review it, and were there any-
There's nothing unreasonable in there.
Others to bring up, or, okay. The only change I made from that draft I sent out was to add a fourteenth condition, so the applicant should provide additional information to demonstrate the SC five unit has been sized appropriately. I believe we did that today.
Correct.
We just have not had time to review it internally, so we will in the next day or two, so that condition should be met, but we just, I just wanted to put it in the decision in case it wasn't met, and we have to go back and get additional information, so. I don't know if, how much you want, in detail, you want to go through this, Mr. Chairman, fellow board members, I don't know.
I don't, do we?
No, Mr. Chairman.
No, I don't think so.
Right, that way.
Full, full goal, the detailed review. We're all in agreement.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion and seconded to approve the Hayward Hospital, I have to keep referring to the metric grid project.
Micro.
Micro, micro grid project. With conditions stated. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? I should have said discussion, but I don't think there are any discussions. We've already had them.
Mr. Chairman, do we need a hand vote, or is this sufficient enough?
Say that again.
We need a supermo- uh, super majority, do we have?
We've all voted in favor.
Okay.
We're all four of us.
Yes, sir.
Voted in favor.
That's suffice.
That's it.
Thank you very much.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Wait a minute.
Next meeting.
Sorry, can we close out the public hearing?
Want to close the public hearing on the Hayward Hospital micro grid project? It's closed. We're done with that project. No, no weather renouncements, or any news? Anything we need to know about?
I don't have anything in the packet, so-
Okay.
Make a motion, we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.